So here are some documents which are included in a bundle of documents I've provided. So we've got first off the About 20 Times article about Ken Patterson dying. And then the costs incurred as a result of the Lee Orton restructure, which are listed here and there's also mention of a further $127,000 paid to another public sector consultant, Morrison Low. And my understanding is that by the time all the bills were in, I think it was over $700,000 for that. And you'll also see here another Atago Daily Times article talking about all the top 10 managers being cleared out. And it's a difficult and messy years according to Terry Molloy, who was a councillor at the time. Now what we have here is an exhibit in which Richard Mumford from Delta has been asked to provide documents by Grant Strang, which were all fed into the employment investigation. So you'll see here, this is on Friday the 7th of March at 12:29. And asking for a document in PDF locked format going to Anna, that would be Anna Bolton and myself. And you'll see sure enough, on Friday at 5:30, it's heading off to Grant and Anna. And he's got an attached document. And you can see here that it's got a password associated with it, so all very confidential. We've also got here Cliff Barrymore from Geni/SPART providing his input. And so what we've got here is him on Friday the 7th of March at 4:29 providing whatever he can to Grant to assist in an employment investigation. And he's referring to the fact that there's on the email server full access by myself and one other person to the email account. And that is of course the concern, even though that's been like that for the last one and a half decades under three previous managers. And then the largest amount of information came from the Geni Spark contractor Chris Moore. So you'll see here from Chris Moore, this is actually sent on Saturday the 8th of March at 10:16. So he's been working busily document attached TCC observations. So that's being forwarded through. Now this is the document TCC observations and we'll be coming back to this later on. But what I'm just going to do is you'll see here, there's a number of things which Chris Moore has identified. What I'm just going to do is just cover off the dates involved here. So this one here is in March. This one here is an issue discovered in January, potential issue. And then we've actually got another issue here dating back to October 2013, which is the timeframe when the $1.35 million spend occurred. And also the timeframe when we had the change rate of councillors. And also the timeframe at which Grant started targeting the other manager who had met with Jane Lovell-Gad and Gary. Now we have here another exhibit from the Criminal Disclosure, which is the Meeting Action Points. Myself, Jane Lovell-Gad and Gary Poole, 25th of June 2013. And you'll see here that Jane is going to coach Grant. So obviously there, in order for that to have been the conclusion, there must have been some sort of acknowledgement by Jane and Gary of the issues that were occurring. We then have meeting on the 2nd of September 2013. And you see a few comments here that the Dunedin City Council staff who the manager had bumped into had disbelief that he had a role in a local authority again. They noted he caused turmoil. And then down here, we've also got, it was heard that Grant says that staff are useless and wants to get rid of ICT team leaders. Jeff noted the same. Jeff met with Grant to discuss, then Grant said, I can't recall. So this was fairly typical of the sort of behaviour that we had from Grant Strang and the honeymoon period over in 30 minutes with him. Now we've got here a statement of one of the staff who left. And you'll see down here, the behaviour that I was referring to, that he, and this is Grant Strang, suggested that this particular manager should be looking elsewhere for a job. This manager happened to meet with other information management people at a conference who had encountered Grant previously and essentially his, understanding of his behaviour aligned with what his observations were. There were other meetings with the group manager, who was Jane Lovell-Gad at the time. And that this manager came away feeling ignored. And within 30 minutes of one of the meetings, Grant was asking, did something in the meeting that stood to be confidential? So this is also part of the behaviour that we had at TCC. This particular manager looked after four teams comprising 17 staff. And you'll see here constantly had to work with them to deal with the fallout of Grant's behaviour. And here we have confirmation of the fact that this manager resigned with no other employment to go to, which highlights the level of discontent and stress that this manager was under. And last of all, this manager confirms that many other staff feel the same way, so the situation wasn't unique. The reality of the workplace at this point was that I'd come into work and I would be met with a barrage of problems. Problems caused by changes that Geni staff or SPARK staff did overnight, which hadn't been notified to anybody. And the general pattern here is that any change control that was needed, which Grant Strang himself wanted, had been bypassed at the approval of Grant Strang. And so nobody, including team leaders, necessarily knew about the changes. And I would basically potentially spend up to half a day solving yet another problem, which was created by Grant Strang in conjunction with contractors. So these comments here are really the result of the frustrations that are being experienced. And you'll see a couple of things here, the comments on there I've typed out here. If staff are not to waste time on email discussions, it would be best to get the parties together before making decisions. Grant Strang could walk, talk on this one as it is what he wants, but he does not do it. Now this was in part as a result of meetings that Grant Strang had with the various teams within IT. And he would come in and make statements about how something was now going to operate. And it would be quite clear to a number of staff, including myself, that this was not going to work. So he would declare that it needed to be put into place. And I would ask him if it's okay for me to forward anybody who has a complaint about the new process to him and advise that this decision has been made solely by Grant Strang. And he was happy with that. And typically what would then happen within a day or two, when we had another meeting, he would then advise that things had been changed again and changed usually back to the way they were. And quite often other staff would pipe up and say, so you're just changing it back to the way Jeff said it would need to be done in the first place. And he would mumble and want to move on to the next topic. So a situation where he was just moving so fast, he couldn't actually himself process the impact of the changes he was making. And we've also got here some of the frustrations as a result of the way contractors were behaving in conjunction with Grant Strang. So this is ensure change control is followed. Grant Strang wants a change control process, but nothing appears to have been submitted on the form for various things that have been done. And Grant Strang is a major irritant here. So the reality of this from my point of view is that the only reason that Grant wanted the change control process was to essentially give something to show the auditors from Audit New Zealand each year. And once again, in order to make the workplace unpleasant, he essentially made it as difficult as possible for staff to actually get changes approved. But contractors could meet with him and bypass the change control process altogether and just make the changes. Now we also have here a email communication you'll see from Cliff Barrymore also on Friday the 7th of March at 11:35 AM. So Grant has definitely been busy on Friday, ready for the employment investigation that's going to kick off on Monday the 10th. And you'll see here that I've asked him a question and he has told me that he doesn't recall as he has short-term memory problems, or so his wife tells him. And down here, he then says, I think he left unconvinced of my short-term memory loss, but it did prove the importance of the machine to him. And then he's also advising that there's some further scribblings on the whiteboard and he's taken a photo. So what was the suspicion that Cliff Barrymore was nothing more than essentially a paid spy by Grant Strang was very much the case? And we also have here some feedback from one of the staff in the IT department to Anna Bolton stating the obvious. And this particular person has some additional comments they'd like to make to Anna. And you're suggesting that you look at the exit interviews of staff that have resigned from the team in the last few months. For example, and I've deleted their names, the level of staff resignation has been excessively high. Not only are we losing significant in-house knowledge and skills, but the council is losing its financial investment in the staff. Secondly, the current culture in our team could best be described as dysfunctional. We're going to have another statement from another staff member, which once again isn't going to be particularly pleasant. But we'll see here that during the 15 months that Grant was the manager, this particular staff member only engaged with him three or four times in conversations and found this Grant to be a most unusual character. It's also mentioned here that in many cases, trying to understand any of the documents that Grant put out was generally difficult. In this particular case, when it was understandable, in fact, what was found to be the case after a bit of Googling was that it was taken word for word from a Wikipedia article. So in fact, the only time that documents in this staff member's view made any sense is when they were just copied and pasted off the internet. We've also got comment down here that the events following my suspension could only be described as bizarre. Mentioned here that in the days before, I'd just been challenging his competence in terms of doing his job as an IT manager. And that most staff felt uncomfortable and he seemed to foster an environment of fear, uncertainty and mistrust. We've also got a situation here where a number of staff decided to approach management en masse and felt that our concerns would be listened to, called a meeting with the group manager and Anna Bolton. Louise did not attend the meeting, even though this is 25 of the staff below her to do with a significant development that is occurring. So they just met with Anna and Penny, who was an HR advisor. And essentially a large amount of feedback, which I referred to earlier as a tsunami, must have existed even prior to this and still nothing is happening. So this is a letter going back to Louise Miller from Bill Nadney, who was my barrister at the time. And essentially this is in response to the letter, which I believe was received the day after the search warrant, stating that they would now like to look at putting me on suspension without pay. And essentially the relevant part here is that Bill Nadney's preliminary view is that you're not entitled to lie on that clause because the police investigation seems to be the result of the same complaint by the council, which would be tied in with the employment issues.
Now the email security that arose during the employment investigation essentially was the result of two aspects coming together. The first was that myself and another person in the IT staff department had full access to the email server, which up until that point in time was just used by staff. And the other part of this equation was that Grant Strang then initiated a process, I think mainly through SPARK contractors once again, to actually get all the councillors moved on to a at taronga.govt.nz email. Now, the logical conclusion, of course, for anybody with half a brain, in my view, would be that if you've actually got an email server with two staff members who have access to all the email system and you're going to add councillors, then of course the councillors and for that matter the mayor will have their email able to be accessed by those two staff members. What we therefore have is the left hand not knowing what the right hand is doing. And in this case, the left hand and right hand is attached to Grant Strang. And he has essentially then created a problem of his own making by moving the councillors onto the email system and then alerting the management above to the fact that myself and somebody else has access to all councillors' emails and mayor's emails. Of course, is the outcome that you would expect, given the preconditions that existed. So stupidity at its finest, but never mind, we will have the ratepayers of Taronga pay dearly for each one of these mistakes as they unfold. And that's just the first of many. Now, the second issue that arose is one around security. And for anybody who's been involved in the IT business, security in terms of an employment investigation is a great one. Because there's lots of things you can look at, firewall security, router security, password security, network security, it just goes on and on and on. So it's a gravy train of issues that you can generate. And also tied in with that is that there's of course always shades of grey in terms of how much security is enough versus too much. Now, I won't go into all of the details of this, but I'll just cut it down to the short version because this whole security thing went on meeting after meeting after meeting. But the gist of it is that the Taronga City Council chose to take the highest security standard available in New Zealand, which is that produced by the GCSB, the NZISM standard, and apply that to Taronga City Council. Now, I recall at the employment investigation stating that Taronga City Council has never ever used the NZISM standard. And to my knowledge, back in 2013 or thereabouts 2012, when I actually saw a survey of security standards in use, I believe that there was no council in New Zealand that was using the NZISM standard. So despite all of that and that that information was made available, I believe at the time Matthew Ward Johnson, the barrister acting for TCC, piped up and said that the council's view is that they can choose whatever security standard they believe is appropriate in order to measure the required security. And of course, my answer to that is that this is essentially shifting the goalpost. I actually thought the goalpost I was heading for was over here and now you've actually moved it over here. But nonetheless, in the usual spirit of a employment investigation in the council arena, we got stuck into that. Now, early on, once I had seen what had been produced, I wrote to the GCSB and asked for clarification of the classification system used on the NZISM standard. Now the NZISM standard has a number of what they call classifications. So you don't just look at the standard as it is, you have to actually determine what classification you fall into. And the classifications basically start off, I think it's with sensitive, in confidence, restricted, confidential, secret and top secret. Now, the way that that NZISM standard operates is that for the bottom two, sensitive and in confidence, those both get rounded up in terms of implementation to an R which is restricted. So there is no actual implementation of sensitive and in confidence in the NZISM standard. What the Price Waterhouse Cooper staff did, I think it was Richard Thims and somebody else at $300 estimated per hour, they decided that the actual level that the Taronga City Council needed to work at was the C level confidential, which was one further notch above restricted. So nonetheless, we continued on with the NZISM standard at two steps potentially above in confidence. And if the material was only considered to be sensitive, it would have actually been three steps higher up it. Sensitive and confidence, restricted and then confidential. So this continued on and while this whole employment investigation meeting after meeting continued to address these security issues, I was waiting for a response back from the GCSB. So I eventually got a response back from none other than Ian Fletcher, the director of the GCSB. And in that he stated that the only time you could use restricted or above would be if the material being protected was of national significance. So in other words, in the context of a council, the only levels that would apply would be sensitive or in confidence. And they would have to be rounded up to restricted in order to implement it. So therein lies the reason, in my view, why no council in New Zealand uses the NZISM standard. Because that rounding up process essentially incurs cost and incurs annoyance unnecessarily because the standard does not provide an implementation at the levels low enough for a local council. Anyway, after many meetings and me eventually pointing this right out at the end, that then appeared to cause some deathly silence. And there was some further, what I would call, wittering from Louise Miller and Price Waterhouse Cooper consultants and exploring this avenue, which essentially went pretty much nowhere in my view. It was a matter that was intended to provide as much aggravation as possible with the most likely scenario that it wasn't going to actually achieve anything. That would be my view.
Okay, so what we have here is the response from the GCSB back in May 2014 to my inquiry about application of the classification level in the NZISM. And we'll see down here that Ian Fletcher, the director of the GCSB has responded by saying that restricted confidential secret and top secret are classifications used to protect information where compromise of that information could affect the security or defence of New Zealand or the international relations of the government of New Zealand. Over the page, we have sensitive and in confidence classifications, which are the two bottom ranks. Are used where compromise threatens the interests of individuals, groups.
Further to the security, the Delta people, Richard Mumford and Geoff Bernard, were extracting logs out of various firewalls and feeding those to Price Waterhouse Cooper for investigation. And I believe from the employment investigation, they were attempting to go back seven years of changes. Now, after going back approximately three and a half years, the whole situation there was that they had been looking for something that I had done wrong. They couldn't find anything where I'd actually done anything wrong. And on questioning them whether or not they found anything which was wrong, which I'd fixed, sure enough, they had. So the nature of the employment investigation then took another tangent, which was exploring how those fixes were made and how staff who had made the changes were then informed not to make similar changes again in the future. So that whole part of it, which was quite lengthy, as far as I'm concerned, was completely futile and went nowhere. Now, the third issue that arose was the fact that there was a web camera on my PC. The web camera was actually tied in with a centralised BOPLAS video conferencing system that had been provided or set up for all of the councils making up BOPLAS. So that essentially meetings for BOPLAS could occur without staff having to hop in cars, burn fossil fuels and spend a lot of time travelling to one location. So I was involved in that part of the BOPLAS, that particular BOPLAS project. And so once again, the web camera was perfectly able to be explained. But neither Louise Miller nor Anna Bolton claimed they could actually find the purchase order for this. Now, of course, the purchase had actually been made by BOPLAS, which is a separate council-controlled organisation. So from what I can see, both Anna Bolton and Louise Miller were looking in the Taronga City Council purchase and finance system and unable to find it, couldn't actually bring themselves to ask anybody to help. And the end result is that they needed to look in the BOPLAS financial system. Ultimately, I got in touch with Canon, where the camera had been purchased from up in Auckland and obtained the purchase order number, which I then duly provided them. And that issue went away largely. The web camera issue had been generated by Chris Moore. And the allegation was that when I wasn't at my desk, apparently the camera would come on and it could plausibly be recording something. The documents you'll see I have provided would, I believe, indicate that the most likely scenario that I can think of was that the screensaver that kicked in on the PC, given it was a Lenovo PC, makes use of any web camera to detect a face. And if it can not detect a face, it switches on the screensaver quicker. So I believe that is the reason why the camera was periodically coming on. And that is a fairly typical use of a web camera when it's idle on both laptops and PCs. And I think a few other vendors provide that functionality, but that's certainly a function which you can make use of on even modern Lenovo laptops. So the camera itself was claimed to be doing surveillance. And you'll see from the picture that it actually faced out a window on the side of the building. So even the claim that it was recording covertly people in the office seems to me not only bizarre, but when coupled with a reasonable explanation like that and absolutely no evidence that there was actually any video recording going on, it's just diabolical. So it's in the same context as the email security, just incredible stupidity. But once again, generated by a contractor who plausibly wouldn't have known any better, wouldn't have known why it was there and made an allegation which could be substantiated potentially. Okay, we then have an issue with IPv6 and here again is another load of crap and mess. So the situation here was that because BOPLAS was the first voluntary initiative involving quite a large number of councils, nine all up, a part of the Department of Internal Affairs was tasked with improving the uptake of IPv6. And this was essentially to help move New Zealand forward into the future as there will be issues with IPv4 before too long. So knowing that BOPLAS had been a voluntary initiative and that a number of councils were all cooperatively working, they approached Taronga City Council and ultimately that came back to me in terms of seeing whether or not Taronga City Council would be interested in implementing IPv6 both on the external facing side, which is the websites, but also internally. So this came about as a result of the Chief Information Officer at the Department of Internal Affairs requiring all councils to basically switch to IPv6 in the immediate future. And the Department of Internal Affairs wanting a council to put up their hand and basically take the plunge. So Taronga City Council management at the time, in conjunction with myself, initiated a process to put IPv6 in place in order to be a bit of a flagship for councils in New Zealand. And once again, this particular part of my work became a large issue. Now, there was plenty of information in the various information repositories at TCC about all of this. And as emails and other things got dredged up, the issue essentially seemed to go away. But once again, it was a case of wasting enormous amounts of ratepayer funds in an expensive employment investigation when honestly, Louise Miller could have either popped in and seen me, booked a meeting or made a phone call in order to actually find the answer to this question. So nothing particularly mysterious, but it seemed to cause not only a lot of cost, but it was there once again in order to achieve a In order to um achieve a specified outcome, which was predetermined in my view. During an employment investigation such as this, um when allegations are made by the council. There is a need to provide the employee with relevant information so that they can defend themselves. So right early on, when various issues were being raised. Um there was an understanding that the council would provide me with various emails in order to address some of these issues. And um other documents so that I could actually uh explain what was actually going on. Now, it wasn't until May approximately, I think it was halfway through May, when this um. Requirement to provide me with information actually was completed. And what happened in this particular scenario is that Anna Bolton, who was running the H R investigation. Provided me with a hard drive and two U S B memory sticks with various information on. Now, um for one of the U S B memory stacks, I believe that the password didn't work and. The um two staff running the investigation, Anna Bolton and Louise Miller, couldn't seem to figure out. Um what the password was, so sent me a second one. And they also provided me with a hard drive. Now, the only um thing they needed to do was provide me with a hard uh copy of my emails for a certain timeframe. But in fact, they actually provided me with an up-to-date copy of all my emails along with the information. For the timeframe I required. Now, unbeknown to me at the time, what had happened is that approximately, I believe, four or five days. After the first employment investigation meeting. Um Anna Bolton and Louise Miller had asked Grant Strang for any more issues. Now, this investigation was supposed to be, according to Louise Miller, an independent investigation. However, um the fact that they were asking Grant Strang for additional issues. A few days after the first employment investigation meeting says to me a few things. First of all, it says that they realistically knew that the issues that they had raised would probably go nowhere. And all they were doing was wasting rate payer funds, um pursuing them and trying to create a lot of aggravation. And the second thing is that the independent investigation was nothing other than a facade. For Grant Strang raised issues. Now, unfortunately, um in the process of asking Grant Strang for some more issues. He took two calendar appointments that I had created and forwarded those to. Uh Louise Miller and Anna Bolton, along with commentary um included with the calendar appointments that he forwarded. Now, for anybody who has made use of Microsoft Exchange in their workplace, which is quite typical. Uh you will be aware that if you take a calendar appointment and forward it to somebody else. It typically comes up with a question asking, do you want to contact the owner and notify them of the changes that you've made? Um so that must have happened and foolishly Grant Strang clicked okay or yes. And so what happened is that unbeknown to Grant Strang, Louise Miller or Anna Bolton. Um a copy of the communications was then also sent to me. Because Tauranga City Council provided me with an up-to-date copy of the emails. Upon opening the um email files that they had provided me. I could then see this communication between Anna Bolton and Louise Miller. So at that point, um concluded that there was my evidence that this was a witch hunt. Um and nothing more. The independent investigation was just a facade for Grant Strang. And in fact, um will persist with this, pretty much get nowhere and then two additional issues would be raised. Now, in that process of providing me with that hard drive, um I thought I would turn the tables one hundred and eighty degrees. And do exactly what the council had done to me, which is when you have a um storage medium, hard drive or anything. Um pretty much, if you delete a file in Microsoft Windows, um it first of all goes into the rubbish bin. But if you enter the rubbish bin, um the file still is not actually deleted. All that happens in Microsoft Windows is that the reference to the various parts that made up the file is essentially deleted. But using clever software, you can go along and recreate the um deleted files. Now, you won't necessarily be able to recreate the file name, but it will be able to recreate a. A file name which points back to the reconstituted parts of the um file that was deleted. So because the council had done this um in terms of the workstation that I had um been using. I thought it um appropriate to do it to the hard disk which I had been provided by Anna Bolton. And the end result of that is after a couple of days. I had recovered something of the order of fifty five thousand files of this hard drive. So after recovering these fifty five thousand files and having a look at what we had there. The um information basically fell into a number of categories. First of all, there was confidential H R documents, um which should have never been released to anybody else and stayed with H R. There was picture and video porn. There were software licence keys for um purchase software that T C C used. There was I T admin login information for T C C. Along with the various other I T access information like I P addressing and web servers and things that you would need to connect to. In order to use that login information. Um and so it went on. So essentially, what we now had was a situation where I was being held. To the highest security standard in the country that I know of, the N Z I S M standard. At two to three classification levels higher than what was appropriate for council. And here we had Anna Bolton Bolton providing me with a hard disk. Which was absolutely chock full of stuff which should have never ever got outside of the council. So it, from my point of view, made the whole of the security um investigation into a farce. Personal undertaking was then signed, which um amidst the confidential H R documents that were salvaged off the hard drive. But um essentially um requires me to say nothing about that. Um which I, of course, I'm doing right now in order to make sure that everybody is aware of the sickness. That exists at Tauranga City Council. But a few more things in the employment investigation, which was private use of T C C assets, which from my point of view. Um it was actually the exact opposite. It was me setting up infrastructure at home at no cost to the council. To enable me to test the internet link along with other things on the external facing side of what T C C offered to the public. Uh there was also a phone call um I made, which was following up on some background information on terms of Grant Strang. And eventually the council decided that they would give up on that one. Um and so we actually reached the end of the main set of issues from my point of view. Um which really was a complete and utter dismal failure. Now, one thing I'll just um perhaps point out here, which is um not good either. Is that the reason I had performed that forensic undelete on the hard drive that Anna Bolton had given me. Is because there was also some um unpleasant video material that had actually been discovered. On a memory stick on my P C through the same process that the council had under undertaken. Um that was using, I believe, Brett Whale from Computer Forensics Services. Now, that information, which um they recovered, all those videos that they recovered. Um actually ended up coming from council laptops. And the reason why they were on the memory stick was so that A, they were not on the council network. But the second reason was that there was concerns that I had raised in the past. About the type of material that was left on laptops, which were left in the workshop for. Reformatting and um sending out to community groups. And that uh those videos had been copied from various laptops. In order to show the type of content that was appearing on Tauranga City Council laptops. So we never got to that in the council investigation. Um I just went along with what was being asked. And of course, the only thing that was asked was, were these put on um to a memory card which was privately owned by myself? And the answer was yes. Anyway, we get to the end of the employment investigation and of course, nothing has gone particularly well. Um and at this point, two further issues get raised, which were the two issues that I had. Provided to me in the emails earlier on. Now, I was already prepared for those issues, so I dealt with the first issue which was changed control. And how bizarre it was at T C C and that its only real purpose was to um provide a facade. To allow the auditor to tick a box. Um and after that, I then explained, because both Louise Miller and Anna Bolton were surprised at how prepared I was for that question. Um I then explained to them the situation that had transpired with the communication with Grant Strang. At this point, Anna Bolton put her head in her hands and there appeared to be some um weeping or something going on. She really did not want to make eye contact with me any further. And Louise Miller um was quite happy for the remaining matter, which I can't even recall what it was, to not be addressed. So I believe at the time I basically said to her that we've got all these barristers sitting around. And all this time that's been spent on it, surely you want to know the answer to the second additional question. And um indeed Louise Miller um confirmed that she didn't. And um the um investigation meeting was terminated. So essentially, the true sickness of what had occurred here had been uncovered. And it was just a woeful waste of rate payer money to try to um undertake a predetermined outcome. Having seen the sickness at T C C, um we then entered into a discussion about me leaving. And the reason I was wanting to leave was that I had seen enough about the operation of the new council management. And essentially, I no longer wanted to work at Tauranga City Council. So a discussion was had around that and essentially yet another meeting was convened. In order to put in place an agreement and redundancy um payment for myself. So the redundancy payment was um mentioned in the final settlement agreement, as it's called. But in fact, this isn't, in my view, a true redundancy because at no point had the council ever undertaken. Any processes, as is typical, to determine that there was in fact uh no longer need for my position. In fact, it was me leaving because the council had become too sick um a workplace for me to work. And that was consistent with the manager, the other person who provided a statement. And of course, other staff who um left without um leaving any uh written record of the exact reasons. What was essentially going on here was that I was meeting weekly or twice weekly with Grant Strang. To provide him with background to a lot of um the um uh work that had been done at T C C. And behind um my back, he was essentially liaising with contractors. In order to make use of that information to best effect in an employment investigation. Knowing full well the special nature of the work that I did. So a very, very um sick workplace, which um essentially has at the centre of it. A um manip- manipulative use of Boplas. In order to achieve plausible issues through contractors, which could be used in an employment investigation. But which was all easily explainable by a discussion and completely unnecessary. Where we've got to is that the employment investigation is finished. I have decided to voluntarily voluntarily leave the council because of the woeful management. And what we have is a situation now where the council has been, from what I can see. Spending around about ninety six thousand dollars per month on the employment investigation. And then there's some additional costs over and above that. And we now have a situation where on the fourth of September two thousand and fourteen. I actually finish up at the council. So my remaining time um will not require me to go into work. I'll just stay at home and the rate payer will pay for that along with the redundancy. And um the council has handed the uh criminal, two criminal charges over to the. New Zealand Police. Um I have then at that point um. Uh pleaded uh not guilty and have elected trial by jury. Now, the way that this works is instead of having trial by judge. Um trial by jury is available, I believe, when you have a possible prison term, which is greater than five years. So trial by jury is more expensive, requires all the jurors to come in and make a decision instead of the judge. So I elect to do that. So what then happens is that the case which has been handed from T C C to the. New Zealand Police Prosecutions Department, then gets subsequently handed to the Crown Prosecution Prosecutor. And the um taxpayer then starts picking up the bill from the tech um Crown Prosecutor. Now, the Crown Prosecutor in this case is Greg Hollister Jones. And uh the person within uh his um legal entity. Um that liaises with me on this is Hayley Sheridan. And essentially in October, so this is approximately one month or more after the employment relationship is finished. Um I am provided with over four thousand pages of criminal disclosure, which is the unique aspect of this. In the sense that uh the inside operation of the council has been exposed through this criminal disclosure. Which would not normally be the case. Now, um the um uh person from Greg Hollister Jones's office, Hayley Sheridan. On twenty third of December, so a couple of days before Christmas two thousand and fourteen. Um sends an email to my barrister Bill McNally. Asking if I would be interested in pleading guilty to the lesser charge, which only carries a two-year term of imprisonment. And um to that I answer no. So what then happens is that um we now have another interesting scenario. Under the Criminal Disclosure Act, there is provision for the Tauranga City Council. To actually um provide two reasons for. Uh holding information back from a court. One is that it is confidential in some way. And the second one is that it is um going to impact their business operation. Now, in the council making the criminal disclosure. They have elected to not make any redactions at all. Um whereas the police in terms of their involvement with the case have chosen to make some redactions. So I then get over four thousand pages of criminal disclosure. Um which essentially red documents the whole of the um employment investigation very nicely. Along with all the information that I suspected was the case. That was withheld from me during the employment investigation. Now, as a result of that um response back to Hayley Sheridan, that no, I would not plead guilty. In February two thousand and fifteen, I then appear before um. A judge at the District Court, I think it is, or High Court in Tauranga. And um the end result is that the um Crown Prosecutor chooses to withdraw the charges. Now, it's worthwhile perhaps looking at those two charges and just sort of seeing the um basis for them. The first one was illegal access to a computer system. Now, when the deletion occurred. It was while I was on special leave. And while the council may not have wanted me to connect in and do anything on their network. The end result was that they never at any point told me that I wasn't able to do so. So essentially, that charge was null and void. Um the second charge, which was damaging the computer system, um also had its problems. Because the deletion was of other councils' um I T information. So from the other eight councils approximately. Um in terms of T C C, who were bringing the criminal um charges, they actually got a gain. They actually got a gain in terms of the available space of space on their storage. Which um meant that they didn't have a loss. And without a loss, um essentially the whole of the criminal charge essentially falls flat on its face. So essentially, the Crown Prosecutor, after they had asked if I would plead guilty to the lesser charge of illegal access to a computer system. Um has obviously figured this out. Um has obviously figured this out and essentially decided to withdraw the um case now. The withdrawing of the case is different to dismissal. And the withdrawing of the case essentially puts it into a what I would call a pause state. So the reality of this is that if new information comes to light, effectively the case can actually be. To all intents and purposes restarted. So we now have a situation where I have been provided outside of the employment relationship with all of this documentation. Which um is not going to be helpful to Tauranga City Council in terms of confidentiality. And I then have a chat to my barrister about whether or not I can, from a criminal perspective, um actually put my side of the story. Um he advises me that I can and I then subsequently create um. A um video which documents my side of the thing of the story and get Bill McNamie to look over it and various changes are made. And after several iterations of that, um then have a video that can be published. Now, when that video is published, the council um then initiates further actions. Through the Employment Relations Authority on the basis of a breach of confidentiality. Um those go through the Employment Relations Authority and the Employment Relations Authority finds in Tauranga City Council's favour. And then I escalate the matter to the employment court, where one Christina Ingles is the judge presiding over the case. So we have three days of hearing hearings. And um this is all, of course, costing the ratepayer um quite a large amount of money. Um Matthew um Ward Johnson charges the council, I think it's three hundred and fifty dollars um per hour. So um hundreds of thousands of dollars all being turned up in this whole process. Um council staff, mainly Louise Miller and Anna Bolton, really stressed. A industrial psychologist is brought in by the name of Keith Hadley McGregor. So not a normal psychologist, but apparently they need an industrial psychologist. Um so he um comes along and assists them and from what I know clocks up a sixty five thousand dollar bill. And that's from what I know, let alone um any other costs. And um we're then uh into um the employment court. Now, in terms of what Judge Christina Ingles had to deal with in terms of the employment court case. It was quite, in my view, formidable. Um first of all, we had a criminal disclosure that had not been made by T C C. It had been made by not the New Zealand Police Prosecution Service. But it had been made by the highest, um I guess, sort of legal prosecutor in the country, which was the Crown Prosecutor. So T C C had essentially voluntarily relinquished the ability to prosecute me directly. Pass that on to the New Zealand Police. By virtue of me um electing trial by jury. Um the New Zealand Police Prosecution Service couldn't actually deal with it. And so it had to be passed on to which point the taxpayer starts paying. And um this criminal disclosure had been made to me by the Crown. In um October, uh so um two thousand and fourteen, outside of the employment relationship ending. So we now have a situation where essentially, the whole of the employment investigation. Um has been provided to me on a silver platter, four thousand plus pages of it. Um and there is no confidentiality agreement or anything else in place. So that's the first challenge. The second challenge is that under um paragraph sixteen, there is the ability to withhold information from a criminal disclosure. Um Tauranga City Council hadn't exercised its rights under that. Um so while there had been information redacted that was done by the New Zealand Police. And T C C was quite happy for all that information from the employment investigation to go into the criminal disclosure. Furthermore, under paragraph eighteen, there's an um ability under the. Trade secrets may be withheld to perhaps withhold information and that could have been done in order to. Withhold information either pertaining to T C C itself or BOPLASS. And once again, that had not been done. So the criminal disclosure had come to me without any redactions in terms of the employment investigation. Um and it had come from the Crown Prosecutor, not the council. So the context had changed. The context was now a criminal disclosure. It was no longer employment related. Now, in addition to that, um legoma requests had been made by me. For information pertaining to the employment investigation. And um we also then had the Legoma Local Government Official Information and Meeting Acts. Kicking into place. I'd also made a P D A submission in terms of the abuse of the criminal justice system to the ombudsman. And because the Protected Disclosure Act um is only available to employees in terms of addressing um. Woeful work work um place practices or other um I guess forms of corruption. I'd also made a substantial, I think it was two hundred and twelve page disclosure to the Tauranga City Council to respond to. So under the Protected Disclosure Act, there is a um paragraph in there which actually. Um indemnifies me or effectively um prevents me from being um held liable for criminal or civil prosecutions. And so what we actually also have is an additional complexity here in that. An employment matter is a civil matter and essentially the Protected Disclosure Act protects me. From um being held liable for any civil matter um as a result of the Protected Disclosure Act. We also have um various other legislative rules, one of which is the access to court documents. Which essentially um provides access to court documents for um potentially any member of the public wishing to access them. And we also have the district court rules, which also provide for access to court documents. And we also have the um uh existence of the confidentiality agreement. In the context of a employment investigation within the settlement agreement. We also have the requirements of the New Zealand Bill of Rights in terms of the um operation of the criminal justice system. Where the starting point is open justice, so or open court. So um a lot of very much competing um issues coming to a head. And um it's very interesting to see how Christina Ingles has actually navigated her way through that.
Now, clause fourteen is really important in terms of the operation of the settlement agreement. Because everything else in the settlement settlement agreement refers back to clause fourteen. And you'll see basically that what clause fourteen has is two parts to it. Um you agreed to maintain confidentiality, strict confidentiality with respect to all of these things. Okay, and then we get down to here where we now have the um second sentence. And the second sentence is essentially talking about an exclusion to this um strict confidentiality. So it says, this restriction shall cease to apply. To knowledge or information which may come into the public domain without there being a breach by you of this restriction. Now, there is, from my point of view, two possible um conclusions from this. This first sentence is all about confidentiality. The second sentence is about um what isn't confidential. And effectively an exclusion to that strict confidentiality um requirement. And what we actually have is. The interpretation that the ex- exclusion sentence, which is the second one. Uses the word without to traverse a logical path. Concluding that there cannot be a breach by me if the information is in the public domain. So what I'm saying here is that this restriction shall cease to apply to knowledge or information which may come into the public domain. Domain, which logically um means that there will not be a breach by me of this restriction. Okay, so I'm not preaching this restriction. Now, the second um scenario is that the word without itself is a exclusion. To the exclusion. So if this is actually talking about strict confidentiality. And this is talking about the fact that certain information can be released. The word without in this context is talking about um an exclusion to the exclusion, which means that effectively. If there is a breach by me of this restriction, the information is not considered to be in the public domain. So I'll just reworded that here. The exclusion sentence itself has an exclusion whereby everything after without. Is referring to me taking actions that invalidate the exclusion. Now, Judge Christina Ingles, in her judgment at paragraph eleven, has um stated the following. It follows that under clause fourteen, the plaintiff was required to maintain confidentiality about services and duties he performed. For the defendant and any trade information. This duty extended beyond his departure. Now, that is a interesting um part of it. Because to my way of thinking, there is nothing in the settlement agreement that indicates that. The confidentiality extended to information provided to me outside of my employment relationship. But anyway, we'll just continue on. This duty extended beyond his departure, but ceased to apply to knowledge or information in the public domain. Unless it was thereby reason of a breach of the plaintiff. So um her honour Christina Ingles has used the word unless to make it quite clear. That what we're actually talking about is the second scenario, which is that this word without is essentially. An exclusion to the exclusion. So if this sentence here is saying that certain information in the public domain is excluded from this strict confidentiality. This without is actually a exclusion to that exclusion, which effectively means. That um if there is a breach by me of this restriction, then it re-enters into being under the strict confidentiality. Now, this is a um play on words which I find quite interesting. In the sense that my interpretation of this was quite clear. Which was that this was a logical connection in the sense that if it is in the public domain. The without means that there can be no possibility of there being a breach by me of this restriction. But the judge has interpreted that differently. And I actually believe that this um ambiguous um exclusion here. Is actually partially by design in order to trap um employees into believing that. This is actually meaning to their benefit, when in fact, it is actually interpreted with the exact opposite meaning. Now, just to sort of understand the, what I call the level of sickness that's present at T C C. It's perhaps worthwhile just focusing here on clause eleven. And um you'll see here that essentially, this is saying that. Cause fourteen applies, which is why that is so critical, because that ties back to everything. But also um the um. Uh further ag- the plaintiff further agrees to um this obligation of confidentiality. And that it extends and includes disclosures um. To T C C staff, past or present, and to. And essentially, what this is trying to do is capture absolutely everything to do with employment investigation, so. Any and all information and or reports and or data during the course of the defendant's employment investigation. Anything in the same category in relation to employment. And anything in terms of the scope of the employment investigation and or resulting disciplinary proset- process. And then we have clause twelve. Which is that um I further agree not to retain copies or anything. So what we've actually got here is a situation where the council is essentially trying to capture absolutely. Every single bit of information about this employment investigation that has gone bad. Everything to do with my employment and ensure that it isn't disseminated. Now, what happened is that because this is a um pretty extensive set of legal obligations. Um um I agree with my barrister that in fact, he should actually, um this is Bill McNamie. Um have a copy of all of this. So that is um what this is referring to. Now, the sickness here goes even deeper because what you actually have now is that. By virtue of my barrister, Bill McNamie, being involved in this whole employment dispute. He himself, and I believe this might be a first for New Zealand. Is now also subject to a employ- uh a confidentiality agreement. In terms of this information and what that confidentiality agreement says is that unless T C C approves the release. Of the information or a court order allows its release, it effectively is now um locked away. In the vaults at my um barrister's office in um forty twenty. So we've actually got a situation where the sickness. T C C is obviously aware of has reached such a level that they do not want anybody to actually see this. Now, we've actually got Judge Christina Ingles addressing the issue of legoma requests. And um what you'll see down here is quite interesting. Um the defendant here is T C C and you'll see that they um. Did not decline the request on the basis that the request itself was a breach of the plaintiff's obligations. Um it was not a pers- point pursued by the defendant at the hearing. Um what the council was really after. Was that the information was not released to the public in any way for anything that I actually obtained via legon request. Now, this is very interesting because for me, the whole purpose of legoma is to actually provide an openness. To information and in doing so, providing a um providing an accountability. Um which governments have to um meet in terms of the spending of public money. Essentially, what happening is happening here though is that Christina Ingles is actually deliberately um diluting. The um ability of me to make legoma requests on the basis. Um purely that the information released may not be um favorable to the council. So nowhere in the settlement agreement have I actually revoked any legoma rights. But effectively, this is implied, as far as I'm concerned, restrictions on the release of legoma information. As a result of the employment court's um decision. That that needs to occur in order to maintain employment confidentiality. And I believe that is a step too far.